Well, believe in us.
I believe in us to the right United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, with its full liberty, justice, and all.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. You have one chance. We're going to move up E three, the BHS student representative report to A one. So you are on.
Recently, the BHS community was decided to learn that Bolton High School was named a 2024 School of Distinction by the Connecticut State Department of Education as part of their annual accountability report. Bolton High School is recognized as a high-performance school. Only 151 schools across the state were named a School of Distinction. And all of these, and of these, only 53 qualified as high performing for this award. Congratulations to the faculty and students of BHS. Last Friday night, BHS had its annual homecoming dance. The student council decorated beforehand focusing on the under the lights theme. Over 100 tickets were sold, so about half of the student population attended. Snacks and drinks were provided free of charge. Everyone had a lot of fun with their friends and got themselves.
All right, the fall sports season has ended. The boys soccer team finished five, eight, and three and made playoffs. The girls soccer team finished one and fourteen. The girls volleyball team finished four and sixteen. I was going to talk about the cross country team, but they will have their moment in the sun. So Bolton swim team, which is a co-op with Manchester High School, placed second in their conference with Ainsley Ferran meddling in three events and going on to place thirty second in the 500 meter freestyle at class double L state championships. This press, this past Friday, eighth grade students from B BCS and Forest Porter School in Columbia visited BHS. They were able to see high school classes in Aspen, giving them a preview of their freshman year next year. Additionally, BHS opened their open house on Thursday, November seventh. Parents and students were given the opportunity to tour BHS and learn about what the high school has to offer with a focus on what they will have available to them their freshman year.
Thank you, Andrew. Feel free to stay. You're going to wait, wait for the guys. I got it. All right. Super.
Uh, now I'll turn things over to superintendent for tonight's celebration of excellence.
All right, great. We're going to start with our Bolton Center School Veterans Day celebration. So Bolton Center School celebrated Veterans Day on Monday, November eleventh with another amazing Veterans Day, uh, really community celebration that also included veterans from town. The celebration was full of chorus and band performances, individual grade level songs and poems, and a select few student readers who read their own original pieces. I would like to invite up to the podium seventh grade student Neo Iger and eighth grade student Amelia Martinez to read the pieces that they wrote and read to the entire uh, community and the Bolton Center School students. So come on up.
Um, this was kind of written for like on Veterans Day, so it might not be relevant right now, but yeah, there we go.
I'm sorry. I pronounced your name wrong. I apologize.
Oh, it's okay.
I'm sorry.
Um, Veterans Day is a day to honor the men and women who have served in our nation's military. Veterans Day is a special day for us to show our gratitude for the sacrifices they have made to protect our country and our freedom. Veterans are incredibly brave. They have gave their time, energy, and sometimes their lives to make sure we live in a country where we are able to pursue our dreams, worship as we choose, and speak our mind. I am so honored and grateful to get to thank you all for your service. While we may never truly understand their courage, what they went through, their courage and selflessness, which made a difference for all of us, is incredibly brave. To all the veterans in our community, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Happy Veterans Day.
Veterans Day. Every meaning differs from one another. However, the real definition is the day set aside to thank and honor all those who served honorably in the military in wartime or peacetime. That's quite the definition for a 24-hour celebration. Veterans Day may only come once a year, but veterans are celebrated every day. Veterans who fight give their time, hoping that it would be a better place for those who come in the future. Some have survived to share their stories while others will never have the chance. These are the men and women who sacrificed everything for us, for freedom, for democracy, for the United States. Knowing this, we shall give our time as they did to thank them. So thank you for your service. Thank you for serving without knowing what the outcome would be. Thank you for making our world a better place. It would not be the same without the service veterans bring to the world. Thank you for everything you have done.
Congratulations to Neo and Amelia. You guys did a wonderful job and thank you very much. Appreciate it. And now I would like to invite up to stand over here.
Line them up a certain way.
You sure can, Coach. Yeah, Coach Smith and the BHS cross-country team.
So, so I want you to line up the gentleman there at the end, Shep. I want you to stand there and then the top seven boys from Shep on down to two, three, four, five, six, seven, as we were at the stadium. And then anybody who else is not in the top seven were are the supporting role. So you're going to be either side, a couple on one side, a couple on the other. So I like the plan. Coach will go on one side and I'll go on the other. So Shep, you start right there, stand next to that gentleman at the end there. Uh, yeah, there we go. Perfect. And then, and then two, all right, yeah, yeah, yeah. Right down there, put that out. Yeah, there it is. There it is. Right there. All right, Dominic, there we go. There's other side, Dominic. All right, good. You do whatever, son. All right.
They didn't run into a bug in there.
All right, good, good.
It's a maze, apparently.
Down there. Perfect. All right. We got this.
All right, Coach, could you, before I speak, would you please introduce uh, your assistant coach also?
Of course. Uh, for those of you guys don't know, this is Matthew Ferraro. He teaches in Ellington. We want to hold that against him. But he's been helping me out for three years and he is very instrumental to making this happen with his passion and energy.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
So after finishing in a disappointing fourth place last year in the class S state championship race, the Bolton Boys Cross Country Team resolved to change the script in 2024. Commitment to training, hard work, self-sacrifice, and teamwork became the team's mission beginning in June. With the team's chief competitor and 2023 state runner-up, Hail Ray High School returning all five of their top runners in the 2024 season, Bolton would not only have to improve their race times for 2024, but outwork, outtrain, outperform, and I'll just add my favorite outlast, their chief competitors in the class S who felt they were the favorites to win this year's championship. Bolton was also returning all of their top runners as well. But those runners had fallen short in 2023. There's a purpose to saying that, trust me. The Bolton Boys powered through the regular season. They were a team on a mission, locked in and focused on every single race. They started the season by winning the Stratton Brook Invitational, the first time they had ever done that. They won every meet during the regular season and then beat every opponent a second time in the NCCC championship meet, making them conference champions for only the second time in Bolton history. Let's give them a round of applause just for that. Don't blemish on the entire season leading into the state meet was a second place finish at Wickham Invitational. Who beat them? Hail Ray, of course, by 25 points. Not an insignificant margin, is it, fellas? Nope. Going into the championship race, all of the procrastinators and pundits were declaring that Hail Ray would in fact win the championship. However, they were seven runners and two coaches who had other ideas. They knew they needed a perfect day. And they also knew that slaying their rival would mean immense pain and discomfort during the race itself. Yes, fellas? Mm-hmm. This is not a sport for the weak-bodied or the weak-willed. The gun went off and the Hail Ray Boys sprinted out to the lead as everyone knew they would. The Bolton Boys settled into position, each runner knowing that what he had to do, who he needed to be in order for the team to prevail. Number one runner, Shepard Livingston's job was to win the entire race. No pressure, Shepard. First place was imperative. Shep ran the best race of his life, shaving nineteen seconds from his time at the Wickham Invitational and won the race. Nineteen seconds. Number two runner Dominic Lombardo had to finish as close as possible to the Hail Ray's number one and two runners, minimizing any damage they could inflict. Like Shep, Dom ran the best race of his life, slicing 10 seconds from his invitational time and finishing in sixth place immediately behind Hail Runners number two runner. Number three runner Daven Duffy had to beat Hail's number three. Anything less was unacceptable and would probably spell defeat for the team. No pressure there.
He knew that.
Yep. Daven ran a whopping 26 seconds faster than he did in the Invitational, a huge personal record. Meanwhile, Hail Ray's number three ran nine seconds slower than he did at the Invitational. Daven beat his opponent by 33 seconds. This would prove decisive. You guys, I'll just add, I've been a runner in like eons. Those times and that shaving off, amazing. Three runners, three personal bests, but the race was far from over. Cross, cross-country races score the top five runners. And races are always won or lost based on the performance of the final two runners. Everyone matters. It's the ultimate team sport. Number four runner Christopher Allenson had to try to beat Hail Ray's number four runner. Chris had lost by 43 seconds to him at the Invitational, but he had to beat him now, or at least significantly shrink the gap. Chris delivered, beating the fourth opposing runner by five seconds. Now, it was down to the number five runner, a spot where Bolton was historically weaker than Hail Ray. All hopes for a championship depended upon an unprecedented performance from the Bolton number five runner. Nathan Atkins, Bolton's usual five runner, pushed himself like he had never done before. At the two-mile mark, he was running the race of his life, but maybe he had pushed a little too hard and his muscles began to cramp. I feel like I'm there. As he began to falter, Andrew Rose, the number six runner, recognized what was happening and hoisted the hopes for a state championship onto his shoulders. Andrew turned on the jets, found an effort level he did not know that he had, passed his teammate Nathan, and finished fifth for Bolton on this day, something he had not done all year long. Way to go, both of you. Andrew ran 65 seconds faster than he had at the Invitational. A mind-boggling uh, time, I might add. Where did that come from? It came from a bonding of friends and teammates, miles and miles of shared running, and a passionate desire to not let your teammates down. We can all accomplish more than we think we are capable of when we do it as part of a team. Of note, Mateo Garcia finished seventh, having just earned the final varsity spot after running a giant time the week before. And Nathan, who gave it his all in the class S race, returned to the same course five days later and recaptured his spot as Bolton's number five runner by running 36 seconds faster than he did at the Invitational. So in conclusion, Shepard was the class S state champion. Shep, Dom, and Daven all earned all state honors by finishing in the top 12. The team beat every team on its schedule multiple times when they defeated Hail Ray a second time five days later at the state open. The team finished 14th at the open, making them the 14th fastest team in the state of Connecticut, regardless of school size, including schools that enroll 10 to 15 times more students and that participate than Bolton. It was the team's highest finish ever at the open. Undefeated NCCC champions, class S state champions. This was the Bolton High School Boys Team's seventh state championship over the years. But Coach has shared with me that we can say unequivocally that by any metric, this was the best Bolton Boys cross-country team and season ever here at Bolton High School. Gentlemen, well done and congratulations. Congratulations for what you did in building such capacity in these young men and really fostering uh, the work ethic and the peace about team, and we're all in this together.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Really important question.
Yeah.
Coach, two banners, state and conference championships?
Well, there's a conference banner and they throw the year up every year. So, and then, yeah.
Congrats, guys.
Yeah, way to go. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Feel free to stay for the rest of our meetings, but should you wish to go, now is your opportunity. Thank you. I'm sorry, Neo. Sorry. Sorry. It's not. I'm sorry. Good night, guys. And that concludes our celebration of excellence tonight.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I know.
Can I add one more thing?
Please do.
Shepard made it all the way. So in the state opens, he also made it falling up to go to the next level.
It's huge.
Because we don't do that very often.
Yeah, no, that's huge. Oh, I wish I had known. I would have said that too. So.
But he's, he's right. This is the best season in history of Bolton.
Yep.
Thanks for that, Coach.
Yeah, absolutely. Amazing. Well, and those fine young men, all of it. It's a, it's a whole team effort there, right? Awesome. All right.
Okay, moving on to our regular business. Comments from the audience. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment this evening? Name and address for a record.
Evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Dean and I'm from 102 South Road in Bolton. I consider myself just a community advocate, uh, being part of the community and I like attending meetings. So thank you for being here every month. Uh, sorry for the raspy voice. Uh, one thing I had thought of last meeting, which I can't remember, I used to come to meetings when I was a student here, but I wasn't sure if the room was always set up like this because it's like wicked annoying to look at the screen back there to all the audience members. So I wasn't sure if that was a decision or just something that happened over the years. And then I was thinking about those survey results from last time and it was like 25, 27 survey results, I think, were incorporated in there. And I just thought a couple of points that might be uh, important for next year to consider, consider if there was duplicate households. I wasn't sure if that was taken a look at or duplicate email addresses. And then it was kind of troubling that some of the open-ended comments were so revealing that they weren't able to be shared. So I was thinking like, if someone was so revealing in their comments, does that discredit the data points that they provided? We kind of bring down the validity of that. So there was a couple of my thoughts that I had to improve the survey for next year. So, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment this evening? All right, additions to agenda. Have any of those ready? Uh, to routine business and the approval of minutes, could I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of the October 10, 2024 Board of Education Business Meeting? Chris, sir, second. Thank you. Uh, any questions, comments, or edits on these minutes? Here, none in favor of the, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. More opposed, more abstaining. All right, uh, on to more of the committee reports and it's just starting with finance.
Sure. So we met yesterday. Um, I'll let Kristen walk through the details on, but at this point, reporting full expenditure, 21% expended as compared to 20% of the prior year. Um, a few things to talk about, notably for grants, um, a few minor transfers, um, and then we'll, we'll talk about the financial impact of any negotiations. But I'll turn it over to Kristen.
Great, thank you. So, uh, four transfers for October. Uh, we had a reclassification to cover the music soundtrack subscription shortfall for the high school. Um, you'll see just two below it, the same situation for the soundtrack renewal at um, Center School. Uh, reclass to cover the TV replacement and equipment of our student commons and the principal's conference room. A reclass to cover the shortfall for the new music teachers, uh, music teacher membership. Reclass to replace the BHS televisions in the main hallway and the gym lobby for student information and notices. And a reclass to cover the installation of Pixelot unit for, that's the BHS uh, streaming that we have in um, the gym, uh, which allows families to watch games from home. And that's what I have.
I mean, I don't have.
I don't have it in my pack either.
So I don't know what announce you're talking about.
Sorry. I've been on my own and I thought because all printed everything, so I apologize. So the reclass to cover music soundtrack shortfall at the high school was $19.25. The reclass to cover the replacement TV and equipment in the student commons and principal's office was $600 uh, out of travel expense to technology. The reclass for the music shortfall soundtrack renewal um, at Bolton Center School is $10.50. Um, the reclass to cover the shortfall for the music teachers' membership is $9. The reclass to replace the BHS televisions in the main hallway and gym lobby for student information notices was $1,193.98. And that came out of postage and technology-related repairs and maintenance and technology supplies. And then the reclass to cover the installation of Pixelot uh, came out of coaching clinics and athletic supplies at the high school for a total of $3,500.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, gentlemen. I thought I had it all straight. This is why I need Christina back.
Uh, could we have?
And ladies, sorry.
To uh, accept the motions for October.
I'll make a motion to approve the October transfers.
Uh, any questions or comments on any of these? All those in favor of motion, please say aye.
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 More opposed, or abstaining. Uh, to personnel, the personnel committee has had two meetings. One was to discuss contract negotiations with the para professionals, soon to be known as para educators, and one to discuss contract negotiations with the administrative assistants, which we will be discussing in executive session later this evening. Uh, we did the student ref report on to community meeting reports. Do we want to start with PTA?
So, um, with, at the center school, uh, in October, we had our walkathon. We raised just under $25,000. Um, 20,000 of that will go back to our school. Anything extra was going into our playground fund for the refurb on that. Um, there's been a few events. I think we also had recently, um, Gary King fundraiser as well. Um, we have a few things set up for coming up in the winter. Um, we have a family dance for someone special getting ready on the schedule for February. We got the gala coming up. And we also launched, and then last week, a new online fundraiser through the company Minted for your holiday cards. So you get 20% discount off and then 15% goes back to Bolton Center School between now and I think till the end of, I don't know exactly, but I just ordered my cards today.
Was the, the, in February, was a family dance?
Yep.
Okay. I just want to make sure I heard it correctly.
Yep, family dance.
Thank you.
Bring someone special to the theme, so.
Thank you.
Um, do we have any other community meetings to report on?
I attended the annual meeting of the Bolton Scholarship Month in October. Uh, we re-elected three directors and added two new directors. We also heard uh, annual reports from our president, Trish Broads, and pressure Emily Bradley. As we kick off our new year and hopefully raise lots of money to give to this great class of graduating seniors.
Maybe they'll have running scholarships. All right, anyone else? Do we have any other meetings to report on? Um, now I'll turn things over to the superintendent for tonight's superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Giard for an update from Bolton Center School tonight.
Half of my report is a repeat of other pieces from this evening. Uh, the school's been very busy since October 10th Board of Ed meeting. The first was a very successful walkathon, over $24,000. The company that we use has been amazing. Uh, the staff that they have on site for like two weeks doing activities and presentations in the gym with a specific message was more than just the walk and the money. There's a character piece to it that they have for two weeks that is uh, very powerful. Um, the staff, students, and families all worked very hard to promote the fundraiser, which is our largest of the year, and it culminated in Mrs. Keller, her, and myself being slimed two times that day. So it was, it was a great experience. And someone said, I, I now um, kind of minted the term the Bolton Shake. And after I got slimed, I got up and it was like this and slime went everywhere. So I guess that's a thing now. Um, I'd like to use this evening to say thank you to our amazing partner in the community, All Town Fresh. They donated $2,700 to BCS on November 5th. Mrs. Keller and myself went down to All Town and they presented a check to us. And it's part of their Coffee for Educators initiative. So they gave um, the staff free coffee for the month of September. And then they took the, like 10 cents from every coffee sold from, from anybody for the month of September from the Bolton, All Town, and it cost a check for $2,700, which will be used for enrichment activities and programs. So All Town has, has been a great partner in the community. Uh, this past Monday, as you heard earlier, we had an amazing turnout at our veterans assembly, the music department, I can't say that enough, did a phenomenal job of getting the classes ready. Custodians, teachers, and students all worked hard to prepare for the day. And you can see the level of appreciation on the veterans' faces. We invited every veteran from town and it was a very good turnout. And a lot of them come up to thank myself, superintendent heck the staff that helped present to say thank you because not every school does something like that. So it's a special piece to what we do. It's amazing.
Very moving.
Uh, lastly, we've had a few early release days uh, since the last Board of Ed meeting. And I just really wanted to take the time to say thank you for continuing to have those in the school calendar. That time is instrumental to the work we do. Time for staff to collaborate, have outside PD providers to come in to, to work with the staff. So those early release PD days have been very productive and I just want to say thank you for having those in the, in the schedule.
Thank you, Daryl. Any questions for Daryl? All right, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Muselli and Mr. Sant.
So you get a lot of info about the daily happenings from Grace and Andrew. So I thought I would take tonight to talk about what's been going on in Todd's life. Every minute of the day, the last month, um, really looking at that, at that post-secondary plan. Um, but just to, just to kind of keep it in, in perspective, this is part of what Amy and Todd do as the comprehensive development guidance program. It's grades nine through 12. There's targeted things for each grade, obviously. Post-secondary planning is the target right now for the fall. Amy Destinay is with us four days a week and she is at the Center School one day a week. She's instrumental in those other things you heard about, like the eighth grade visit. We actually made a trip, um, the rest of the team, meaning the two of us, joined Mrs. Destinay down there to start to introduce ourselves to grade eight students as part of the PSAT planning. And there's, you know, there's activities planned throughout the year for that. So the kickoff for um, the post-secondary was our fair. So the fair has been going on longer than I have uh, been in Bolton. So the fair has been going on longer than I have, uh, been in Bolton. It is planned, um, in cooperation with the other two schools out there, Bacon and Ram. Ram actually kind of organizes it, but it's the power of the three schools being near each other. Because we get representatives, this year was over seventy representatives from military tech schools, colleges. Those reps aren't gonna come out just to one school, but they come here, then they scamper out the door, they go to Ram, and they scamper out the door, and they go to Bacon. So it's, it's a nice choreographed thing. All eleventh to twelfth grade students got to me, Todd prepared the students ahead of time, so they knew how to behave at a fair, what to expect at a fair. He put seventy representatives, some of them brought two, in there with a class of fifty students and some faculty. It's chaotic in there. And it's, so we tried to prepare the students for that. And one of the things that makes that work real nice is we have student ambassadors who literally greet the representatives at the front door, help them carry their stuff, show them where the snacks are and all those kinds of things. Um, we are grateful every year as the representatives literally run out the door, because they're running to Ram, stop and, and see us and thank us, you know, putting it together, but always compliment our students. And that's, that's, uh, that's a nice rewarding part of it. We also talk to the faculty about taking the opportunity to advocate for students. Um, some of us are not very shy, and we'll walk right up to a school and say, hey, have you met Kristen Hecht? You are her top choice school. Or if Kristen is feeling shy, we'll take them over and introduce them. So having the fair here in the building gives us the opportunity to, to lend adult support as well.
And the fair is great too, because it, it gives a sense of immediacy to our eleventh graders. So when we get into the classroom and, um, later in twelfth grade, when I ask them if they remember all the conversations, they'll say, well, we were in eleventh grade. We weren't, weren't really thinking about college or, you know, careers. Um, but the meetings start in eleventh grade, so individually and in the classroom. Um, and we start talking about post-secondary plans, everything from, you know, what is a two-year degree versus what is a technical school. Um, uh, I've met with, you know, all twelfth grade students. So as students come back from the summer, um, I just immediately begin scheduling meetings. Um, so I've met multiple times with students. We set timelines. Uh, we access College Board that houses, uh, student SATs. We discuss if the, uh, we're gonna send those SAT scores based on, on the results of each individual. Um, the Common App is, is the main, uh, portal or platform to apply to colleges. So we create the Common App, we review it together, we complete it. I give them some feedback. Uh, they go home and share that with their families. Uh, there's a heavy family component and demographic component um, that a lot of students don't know. And also go home and ask, you know, your family about that. Um, fast information, so the FASFA, we're waiting, it's supposed to open on December first, so as that comes through, um, we're sending that information out to students and families.
Fingers crossed that it's not a nightmare this year.
We hope.
Right?
We'll get a good sense from the universities once, once it opens.
Once it starts.
Um, students, our teachers have been busy writing letters of recommendation, so, uh, they've been doing that all fall, and students will go and uh, personally request those letters, and then they talk a little bit about themselves, so the teachers can write a, a real personalized letter. Um, and then the, the, uh, college essays was personal narratives. They begin really in English classes in eleventh grade, so they have a, the framework. And then my role is really giving them that, that helping them self-reflect, pulling more information from them, and then giving them a little bit more constructive criticism, which our, our kids are awesome at. I mean, they take it and they come back, we meet again, and they revise. So they've been working, um, really hard on getting these, these college applications ready. Um, and then as far as parents, we're gonna plan a college planning night, trying to do that with, uh, a local university's, uh, financial aid office, so we can kind of compare, combine the two. One for our tenth to eleventh graders, having the college planning night or the post-secondary planning. Um, but our twelfth graders, hopefully can come in and complete the FASFA with possibly the, you know, directors of the university's financial aid program. And then obviously student parent meetings, those are on a re- ongoing basis, we're not suddenly meeting. Uh, so this year is, uh, kind of a good representative of all the work the students have put into. So November first was a big, uh, free application day, because some, some applications are eighty dollars. Um, so a lot of our Connecticut State Schools offer free application days, anywhere from November one to the month of November. So all the work the students did to get those applications ready, uh, November first, we were really busy and, um, a lot of students, I mean, um, they just get nervous when they hit submit the first time. So a lot of us just sat there and we, we did that together, uh, with, with family support. Um, and then there's also fee waivers, right? So we make sure there's, there's no barriers to applying. You know, if we miss the November one day, we have to come up with eighty dollars and it's a real hardship. We have, we have waivers for that. Um, so that was really a great day. That was a good day. Everyone kind of pushed that, that apply button and celebrate, um, and it's ongoing from this point on.
And, and I know that picture showed a small group, but Todd was in here all day. So his students had study halls or, or, or time they came in. So he was literally in that chair all day long, helping kids push that button to kick that off. So we talked about, um, you know, what we do for students or what we do for parents, but we also did something for teachers. So we use some of the time that, that Daryl referred to, some of that, that embedded instructional time, uh, professional development time to work with teachers. Um, and Todd did a great job explaining, first of all, the technology, this platform that you pay the bill for, Naviance. It's how you get the college stuff from here to the college. And there's, there's a learning curve, the technology of that. Um, but a big part of it was on letters of recommendation, including what to say, what not to say, how to respond to students when they ask you, and sample letters. And a nice description of the difference between what Todd might write and what a teacher might write. And to kind of give that to all of the, the teachers. So for some teachers, they've never written a letter of recommendation, and they may get asked for, for several in a year. So we took some of our, um, time during the week for teachers to do that. We talked about practical practices. We answered their questions, because they had a lot of questions, teachers did, about the whole processes. And then they shared some ideas of, you know, how to get a little bit more from a student, make a stronger letter, how to guide a student to ask the right teacher. Um, so we now educated the parents, the students, but also the teachers as part of the kickoff to the post-secondary as part of the developmental guidance program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions for Joe or for Tyler? Great job. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, now we are on to the Grants, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four Grants Budget Review and twenty-four, twenty-five Project Grant Budget. Please tell me you have that.
Yes. Yep.
Okay, good. All right. So, um, the first one you have in front of you should be, um, just the grants, what they are and the types that they are. Um, so I'm, I'm, unless anybody has any questions on that, I'm gonna keep going.
Any changes?
No real changes other than the addition of, um, numbers thirteen and fourteen, the IDEA transition support activities and the para educator support stipend. Um, the state pushed forward monies to districts. It, I think it was the second week of May to be spent by September thirtieth of this year. So to hurry up and get that done by June tenth wasn't happening last year. Um, so we spent the money, so you'll see that in, in this year's piece. I do believe that those were, uh, some remaining federal, uh, COVID relief monies that the state then re-appropriated and had to hurry up and spend by September thirtieth. Because there were a number of districts who, um, w- we were constantly having to do reports last year about money spent from all of the COVID monies that have happened over the years. And, um, I, I, they would send out a list of how much districts had used and how much they hadn't. And there, there were still a lot of federal dollars that, that hadn't been used. Um, and we'll get to Bolton's in a minute, but we did a great job of using our monies. I mean, I think we returned a few hundred dollars in total of ye- years and years of a lot of money. So that was good. Um, the, the golden one is, are the grants and what was expended in FY twenty-four. Um, and again, you'll see at the end, um, thirteen and fourteen. Um, we, we spent a little on the transition program, and we didn't do anything with the para educator support. The Amplify Grants, um, I just want to speak to for a minute, if I could, number fifteen. So, um, we have, um, a group of, um, committed individuals in town that, uh, wanted to create, um, a Bolton, uh, youth, uh, council, I guess we're calling ourselves. Um, so, uh, there's a, some town, um, leadership on it. Beth and I sit on the committee, other members from the town. Um, Amplify is a grant that we've had over the years, and we usually do it every couple, two, three years, where our, uh, middle school and high school students are given a drug, alcohol, tobacco survey um, of information. Um, and then the youth council is gonna use that survey data to help kind of guide programming and that type of thing. One of the things that I've been having conversations, again, and for those of you that have been on the board for a little while, will, may remember this, that Bolton is one of only a handful, maybe three to five communities in the entire state that does not have a Youth Services Bureau. I find that, and I still find it concerning. I think every town in the state of Connecticut should have access to a Youth Services Bureau. Um, a number of years back before, just on the heels of COVID starting, um, Sandy and I, and then when Pam became First Select, when Pam and I had worked with AHM, um, Andover, Hebron, uh, Marlboro, uh, Regional, um, Youth Service Bureau to see if we could join. Or, and it's not something that the school system does. It is, it is a town component that every member of the community can avail themselves of. Um, and we had some conversations, I think we had some traction, and then COVID hit, and to be honest, that, that, pretty much that was the end of that. Um, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that, that maybe now that the Youth Prevention Council, um, has kind of taken some traction and has some interest from community members in participating, that maybe that's something that we can open up and have a conversation again with the First Selectmen, because I do think that it's, it's a good thing for the entire community, not just the school system. So I just want to point that out. Any questions about twenty-three, twenty-four for me, before I move on to twenty-four, twenty-five?
Just kind of curious what the reaction was. Were they willing to take us on as, uh?
They were, and there, there may have been, at least at that point in time, there may have been some state monies to get us s- seated or started. Um, I, I don't know where that stands at this point. Um, I also know that Columbia has joined with them, um, in the meantime, and they do sort of like an à la carte. Right? Like, we think our community needs X and Y, but we don't need Z, so they pay for just X and Y. They don't pay for the whole kit and caboodle. Um, and back then, you know, I think the cost to the entire community, you know, to the town in the budget was something like twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars between that and twenty-three thousand dollars in total. I don't know what it is now. I have reached out to AHM. There isn't anyone there anymore that was there when I started these conversations with the First Selectmen. Um, so, uh, but I do think that there may be some traction with some members of the Prevention Council that also see this as, as something that would be good for the community.
I think it would be a good idea, and obviously more cost-effective to join a regional cooperative than to start that.
Try to have your own, yeah, one hundred percent. Because they already exist and they're already doing the work, you know, so. All right, and then on to, um, twenty-four, twenty-five, that's in the blue. I just also want to call to everyone's attention, uh, the IDEA grants, numbers one, two, three, uh, Medicaid, four, five, six, seven, the title grants, those are all rolling grants. So it's like a rolling two-year deal all the time. So you'll see that we always have carryover funds there, and we always will, because it's a rolling two-year grant. Um, so I just want to call that to your attention. The same with choice. You will see that we have carryover funds. If, uh, when we have an outplaced choice student, ultimately, we are responsible for the amount that we receive to take the choice student, which is ten thousand dollars based on our numbers right now. However, what happens if a choice student is outplaced is we have to foot the full bill and then get reimbursed from Hartford. So we should always be having carryover money there to cover that, otherwise it's coming out of the Ford's coffers, because, and um, the return of the money from Hartford isn't always timely. I'll just offer that. Um, a number of years back, um, I had made a push to have the reimbursements be monthly. They made that change, that went on for a few years, and then they said, yeah, no, we don't have to do that. And that was the end of that. So there's that. Um, and also, you know, you will see an open choice is the, uh, Math Instructional Coach, which you put into open choice. I think at the July Board Meeting, so just a reminder to board members about that, as well as some of other stipend positions to, um, support the high school. Um, you know, I did share with, um, Ashley and Ria, and I've shared this, uh, with Andrew um, about the high school. I, I am seeing a need, and you know, we had discussed this last summer, that there may be needs that are gonna arise out of the elimination of the dean position. And one of the needs that I'm seeing is, we do need some time during the day where someone other than Joe is dealing with sort of minor infractions and things like that from a disciplinary perspective. There's just not enough hours in the day, still the same amount of work. Um, so thinking about a model potentially where we utilize staff that have O nine-two, that maybe if we can free up a teaching period or two, they could be, uh, a dean, if you will, for a couple periods a day, or, or maybe it's a couple different people. It's a couple different periods a day or whatever, just to provide that support. I'm not sure that that's something we can make work this year based on just the scheduling of things. We're looking at it for second semester. I just don't know. I, I would need to talk to the union about it, haven't gotten that far yet, but I just want to put it on everybody's radar that, that that's a need. And we're trying to figure out how we address it. That, you, kind of using that model. So that may end up having to go into choice as well down the road. Questions for me? All right, the next piece you have, please tell me you have this piece.
Yes.
Good. So this is sort of the running record of our coronavirus monies. The new information that is from, uh, last year is the ARPESR Small Town Right to Read Grant. We fully expended that seventy-three thousand dollars as of nine-thirty, and that went towards, uh, the purchase of our classroom library books, if you may recall. Required to run our EL pilot for EL Imagine Learning modules in grades K through three, and also to fund the pilot of the purchase of Bookworms K three. Um, and then just for a reminder for the full compendium, G O's decodable texts were also purchased to support the foundation's alignment. We were also, uh, awarded an ARPA Right to Read Grant for twenty-five thousand dollars. We have fully expended that as of ten thirty-one twenty-four, and that was to provide students with authentic literature, trade books for the K three classrooms for the new reading program. And so that teachers were supported during their pilot of the EL Imagine Learning and Bookworms. Um, and this is all about the science of reading. And then there were some ancillary materials from, for Haggerty and foundations were also purchased. The rest of it, you've already had in the past. It's all of the, the monies that we had received in years past and how we spent them. So any questions for me on that? I just thought it was better that it remains all in one place, because these are all the federal dollars that we receive, so there's just always a running record of it. Okay? All right, that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have no unfinished business. On to new business, um. So as board members, I've shared with you all, um, Diana Pagano has decided that the time commitment of the board, um, and our increased travel and business schedule are incompatible, and she has officially resigned from the Board of Education. So we have a vacancy to fill. I have a letter from the Bolton Republican Town Committee to the, uh, Board of Education, the Bolton Republican Town Committee has nominated and endorsed Ashley Pejoli to fill the vacated Republican Board of Education, seat vacated by Diana Pagano. If there are any questions or concerns, please contact me. Um, Ashley, so an audience this evening, she's a lifelong Bolton person, right?
That's right, yes.
Um, uh, has two small children and the school system has been very active in the PTA as a secretary for at least the last couple of years. Um, I think will be a good candidate to fill the seat vacated by Diana. Um, so I would like, if possible, to have a motion to appoint Ashley Pejoli to the Bolton Board of Education.
Of fifty-one Birch Mountain Road, Bolton.
Okay. Sorry, uh, ask a, for a motion to nominate Ashley Pejoli fifty-one Birch Mountain Road here in Bolton to fill the vacancy, the resignation. to fill the vacancy, the resignation of Diana Pagano to the Board of Education. Does anyone have any questions or comments or? I would like to add a comment first, just to thank on behalf of the board, Diana Pagano for her service uh, for the last three years to the board. I mean, wish her all the best in the future. Anyone have any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Ashley, for being willing to step up.
Especially considering our large time commitment that we have.
They say one being a month. And the big pay.
One meeting.
A lot of pay.
Yeah, it's one meeting a month. Plus one meeting for the Superintendent Search Committee a month. Okay. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Is there anyone who's opposed or abstaining? I will send a letter to the town clerk prior to tomorrow morning or the latest tomorrow morning. And you will have to go down there at your leisure to be sworn in, which takes all of one minute.
Congratulations.
Welcome and thank you for, for stepping up. Um, on to resignations.
We do not have any this month.
Love that.
Awesome.
And now the twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-six school calendar.
You, you have that, right? Man, I tried that one.
Nope, that's all there.
Okay, good. All right. So, um, this is the draft for next year's school calendar. Um, I ran it by the administrators. They checked it out. I, uh, ran it by the union and they checked it out. Um, I did share it, um, with the Columbia superintendent. She asked me like what I was thinking for a calendar. Cause they like to try to align their April break with our April break. Um, I do know I did share this with Joe that Columbia will be starting later, uh, next year after Labor Day because they have an HVAC. Project going to go on this summer, but the high school students will start the same time we start. So that will not be an issue. So, any questions for me on this?
No real changes.
Yeah.
No.
It just feels so early. Is the graduation date?
Um, no, because you can't set the graduation date until next August. You can't set it until next school year by statute. But you can set it at the very first meeting, which we have been doing so that it is set on the hundred and eightieth day of school, which is what is required by statute. So then even if you have snow days after that, if you set it when you already have a hundred and eighty days, you're good to go.
Potentially June tenth.
Potentially June tenth or June ninth.
And in this past year, we had to modify the calendar because of, uh, the primaries. Is that the only modification?
Correct. Yeah.
Yes, that was, uh, every four years a problem.
But it was an every four years problem, right? Yeah, that's what they told us. Yeah. And we have election day off because they vote in the school anyways. We have a PD day that day. So that's a non-issue.
Uh, so looking for a motion to, um, accept the twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-six school calendar. We have a second. Um, any questions, comments, more? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
So anyone who's opposed or abstaining. Okay, we have a school calendar. How about a Board of Education meeting calendar?
So just a reminder for the board that you have to set the Board of Education calendar, uh, by December thirty-first for the next year, January first, whatever it is. So, which is why we do it now so that then the minutes are approved in December. And even though you'll vote on it tonight, it becomes final. So that's just why we do it so early, just for new board members' knowledge.
Uh, nothing noteworthy here, the
Pretty much the same schedule.
Yeah, we've been doing the second Wednesday instead of the third Thursday for the April vacation and pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Um, so do we have a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-six Board of Education meeting schedule? Uh, any questions or comments? Anybody have any conflicts any of those days?
Well, the fire department usually does the September eleventh ceremony.
They do, but we've had board meetings on September eleventh before.
Have we?
Yeah, we have.
Not prefer to not.
No, I think you, because I don't know, you, I, I, we've done it before and we've managed it, so.
Why is the what? The April meeting on a Wednesday?
Because sometimes Good Friday falls
Gotcha.
On a Friday.
My daughter's birthday is what I'm asking.
Yeah, well, you can.
Otherwise, I really wouldn't care, so.
Yeah, well, so you want to, yeah, or not attend?
Yeah. One of those options.
It, it doesn't fall on it that year. It's just that we kept in the cycle just because sometimes board members were taking their kids out. I'm just saying what has happened in the past, might be leaving for vacation a day early and didn't want to be here Thursday night. Or maybe we're leaving Friday afternoon and needed to be home Thursday night to pack. I'll just throw out what has happened previously, hence the Wednesday.
We don't have to move it. Good Friday is the week prior, so it's not really an issue this year.
It's not, except that if people are traveling on Friday. I'm just putting it out there. If you're not the one packing, it's no big deal. But if you are the one packing, it is.
Wednesday.
What happened in the past. You guys do what you want. I won't be here. We'll do what, we'll do whatever you want.
Would you like to change it?
I, I don't really have a strong feeling about it. I'll defer to anyone else and everyone else. Birthdays of this family are important, so let, let's change it unless we'll have an objection.
Sure. Let's, uh.
It works.
Changing it to
People ninth.
The ninth.
Yeah. Sorry, guys.
So do we need to amend? The motion or?
You're having a discussion, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
We're gonna print, so that's fine.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Remanded. Okay, anyone opposed, abstaining, I think I heard everybody. Okay, we have a, you know, a meeting schedule. On to policies. We have a first read for eleven policies. I assume the policy committee is of one. Now that we have a full board, we can.
Yeah.
Next one.
Yeah, I, I confess that I completely forgot that these were going to be on
I got it.
Be extended tonight. So I do not have my usual rundown. Um, but I did review all of the policies and, uh, discuss them with Kristen. Uh, all of them are updates from our attorneys, uh, to bring us into compliance with recent changes in state and federal law. So they're not really anything that we have too much choice about. Assuming that we want to be in compliance with state and federal law, I recommend that we adopt these policies. Kristen, I, I can't remember if you were hoping to have them adopted tonight or if we can do the first read second.
No, we can do a first read second. I think we're okay. At least.
Can I ask what the FAFSA one is? The purpose of that one?
Yeah, hang on one second and I can tell you. So pursuant to legislation passed in two thousand twenty-three, beginning with the graduating class of twenty-twenty-five, students were required to meet certain requirements related to the FAFSA in order to graduate. Public Act twenty-four dash forty-five delays these requirements until the graduating class of twenty-twenty-seven. And we have revised this policy to reflect the change. So in the policy, again, this is Connecticut law. Sorry, trying to get to it. Having to, having to just complete a FAFSA. It, it's completion rates. It's about completion rates of FAFSA and the state wanting every child to come, to do it, whether they're going or not. Now, there is a waiver or there's a, a, a piece in place, a waiver piece that, you know, the school has to make so many attempts and they have to call the parents so many times. And because there's certain information that a kid does not have and cannot fill out for FAFSA. They, you, you heard Todd talk about it tonight. They need their parent to do it. So in the end, if they've made so many attempts or whatever, we have a form that we can fill out, but we have to demonstrate that we at least tried.
Interesting.
And now it's been delayed because I think that there was some a little blowback from that, so. All right. So and then we'll have those for a second read.
All eleven of these are because of law changes.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're necessary revisions based on statutory or regulatory changes, citation of dates or best practices and other corrections. Like some of them were just shipment corrections as appropriate. All right?
Okay, we'll take a vote on that next month. All those eleven and, uh, any other questions about any of them? And the ever popular future business. Now looking for a motion to go into executive session for, the purposes of discussion concerning kind of agreement with the Para Educators Union and the discussion concerning tentative agreement with the Administrative Assistance and Nurses Union and to invite Superintendent Hekt and Director Goldsner.
Motion for executive session.
You have a second? Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 No opposed, abstaining. Thank everyone.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.